Hey, are you ready? I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Town of Fraser's regular board meeting on July 21st, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Can I please have your all?
Andy Miller.
Eileen Waldo.
Brian Cirquevenic.
Katie Soals.
Parnell Quinn.
Philip Vanderdeel. And I have a approval of a motion to approve the agenda first.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda which has the minutes. July 7th. Antoinette did make the addition that for to add special counsel Melinda back to those minutes. So that has been added. So if I can have a motion to approve this.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, for everybody in the audience and on, which is nobody here. Online, we are going getting ready to go into an executive session. So we will be disconnecting. We'll give you a five, five minute warning when we're getting ready to come back from the executive session. So hang on or or come back then maybe 30, 45 minutes and check. I need somebody to make this motion.
I move to enter to an executive. I moved to enter into an executive session for a conference with the water attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 2464024B and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 2464024E regarding Water Master Plan and GWUDI to include Town Attorney Rod McGowan, Water Attorney Chris Thorne, HRS Water Consultant Mark Folumbo, and Steve Barrett, Town Manager Ed Cannon, Town Clerk Antoinette McVeigh, Marketing Communication Director Sarah Winnick, I'm sorry, Public Works Director Russell Pennington, Water Wastewater Superintendent Adam Cocklin, and Finance Manager Beth Williams.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oops, sorry, second. I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. And then we'll be back in a while. Ready, sir?
Yep. Yep.
Why? Okay, welcome back, everybody. We are now at discussion and possible action resolution 2021-0703, the ClearGov budget book.
Do you want this?
Hi, I've been looking into making our budget book and all this stuff. More like, I guess, more all in one place than being able to be like online and have some transparency on our process and all that stuff. So I have, yeah, looked into ClearGov and actually have Ryan Wilson on with ClearGov. And he's gonna like go over their product and list all the fun things that it entails. Because right now we have about four different spreadsheets that we do file our budget in. And this will put it all in one place. And we won't be missing out on different requests and stuff because I came across a couple of things this year already that people had wanted and that did make it to the budget. So that won't happen with something like this.
Thanks for the introduction, Beth, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Make sure you guys can see this. And as Beth mentioned, you know, we've been talking up to this point for the last several months about a way to streamline both the operations of building the budget for Beth and department heads and even for, you know, the Board of Trustee Review. But not only on the operational side, but making this more transparent to the public. So really, my goal today is to just give you a general one minute overview of exactly what it is ClearGov does, who we serve, and then walk you through a couple screenshots of the back office of what Beth and some of the department heads in Fraser might be working on, and then showing you what the end product will be to your residents as far as a budget book, budget presentation is concerned. And then I'll leave space at the end, you know. As far as, you know, presenting to you guys, I want to keep this brief and kind of an overview. I've definitely gone into great detail with Beth. But if there is something that pops up, I'll leave space at the end to answer any questions that you guys have where I can go deeper into detail if you felt like I kind of glossed over something you wanted to learn more about. Does that sound okay?
Yep, yep, thanks. Five, five minutes would be perfect if you could do it five.
You got it. So ClearGov, we, like I mentioned, so we would be a complement to your current accounting system with it, which is Casell. And what we do is we create easy to use software to help governments budget better. Specifically, we only work with local governments and primarily are focused on small to midsize local governments. Specifically, Avon, Colorado is a good example, Dillon, Buena Vista, Lock Buoy, just to kind of name a few. But you'll see here, we want to be easy to implement. We take the heavy lifting off of your team and our team implements for you. User friendly, connects well back to Casell, and it's affordable. This is specifically what ClearGov has to offer. This is how, what we could offer to the Town of Fraser specifically. And what this is, is a budget cycle management suite to help with the main parts of the budget. So the capital budget, multi-year capital plan, building out that personnel budget and the operating budget, and then being able to communicate that to your residents through a digital budget book and a transparency profile. Since I only have five minutes, I'm going to specifically walk you guys through the digital budget book, how you'd be able to build that, and then how that would be able to be presented. In the proposal, though, that is attached to this board meeting document, it goes through the other four tools in detail. And I can answer any questions you guys have about those if they come up. But as far as ClearGov, we are a cloud-based solution. So this, this would be the back office that Beth and the different department heads who log in to put in their requests for capital, for personnel, or for operating would see. So you'd log in through, you know, Chrome, Firefox Safari. And I mentioned I'd specifically walk you through the budget book. At this point, Beth would have already built the budget with the help of you guys, with the help of the different members of the government. And they would have already built the operating budget here through this tool instead of having to use outdated Excel sheets that can break very easily. And it's hard to organize all of the data together. So once we've built out this operating budget, we're ready to build the digital budget book. And from scratch, this is going to allow you to put together a budget presentation document similar to what we have here, the one that y'all are currently presenting and posting. But it's going to show a lot more detail, and it's going to automate a lot of the charts and graphs, the numbers, the information that you guys would want to show in a document like this. So to give you an example of how maybe one of these fun summary pages would be automated, instead of having to copy and paste several Excel sheets in after Beth has built the operating budget through our tool, it's going to automate those charts and graphs into this document here. You can even see some of this text is ready to go based off of the historical information and the budgeted information. We can see different charts and graphs, as I mentioned. And in these automated format, you can choose what do I want to display in the budget book. And this is ultimately building out a presentation that your residents will be able to see. That spreadsheet breakdown you're used to seeing will be here as well and can be customized to whatever you would like to see. So we can easily customize the charts, graphs, things like that. But the takeaway here is you build the budget through ClearGov. It saves Beth a ton of time and also organizes all of that data into one place to be able to report on it, to be able to get it back into Casell, and so that you and your team can be more organized with requests, but also streamline the entire process. Once the budget's created and built and you want to present that to your residents, instead of presenting it just in that PDF format, we found that residents nowadays, they definitely want things on the web that are at their fingertips and are easier to comprehend. So the primary way of viewing this budget presentation is instead of that PDF, this online format, where if I'm a resident who wants to look at the budget book, I'll be taken to this example website here. So this is the Town of Avon. They've filled their budget book with us. And I can go directly to what I'm interested in seeing. So demographics, for example, we'll create this page for you because we have that information from the US Census Bureau. If I'm a resident who's interested in taking a look at the general fund, this information is going to be here for me in an interactive format. So if I'm looking here and I say, okay, you know, what are these numbers specifically? As I highlight over, I can see that I can take out certain sections to see how they'll impact the graph or even look at them in different types of formats to help me better understand the budget and how you guys are making these decisions. This is not only a online document. We can print this to PDF, print the entire document to show at a, you know, Board of Trustee meeting or just a couple of pages. And here's an example of what that will look like, where it generates an automated cover page, footer, page numbers, and even a pre-linkable table of content. So if I click on certain sections, it goes directly to where I want to go in this budget book. One last point, I mentioned being able to build and show capital improvements. So if you guys want to build out that multi-year capital plan, really organize that. That will be both shown in the budget book, but also able to be collected in the back office of ClearGov, where you can see specific requests with images attached to them, the reasoning behind certain requests. And this is, this is something that a department head could fill out and let you know, hey, here's what I'm requesting for this upcoming budget. And as y'all go through the meetings as to what you want to improve or approve and deny, you're able to see this in a really easy visual format, keeping everything in one place. So that's the five minute overview. You pause for any questions here.
So how, what was the cost on this yearly? Was that the 16,500?
This year, it'd be close to $6,000. And like implementation costs will be pushed to next year. And then next year's cost would be 18,300. And then going forward, it would be around 16,500, with a little bit of an increase per year.
16, you say?
Yeah, 16,500 for next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And obviously, was this, was this, this is in our budget for this year?
This year, it's not in our budget. So for this year's budget, it's just, it's $5,900 to be the impact next year's budget.
How much do you want it now? That's what I was going to say.
I really want it. I've been talking to Ryan since like early 2020 about this. Yeah.
And you think it'll, it'll really work well and make your job easier?
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
I don't know. I like it.
Right, there's no issue with
general fund.
with, I don't know. Money hiding, money. There, what am I trying to say?
Am I hiding money?
No.
More, more transparency.
Yeah, there's more transparency.
Yeah, because like if you guys haven't watched that movie, All the Queen's Horses.
And I can also, as like the, you know, each month goes on, I can give them our data and they'll upload it so that it can be that budget actual.
No, I like it. I liked what I, what I saw with the presentation that was in.
Will it, will it save you that much money?
Yeah, how is it worth it? That's a lot of money, 1,500 bucks a month.
Yeah.
Oh, but you haven't been here for the budgets and seen the Excel spreadsheets that are this wide.
Yeah.
And really pretty hard to.
That seems a lot, like a lot of money to me. I don't know.
About there, there's some savings. I mean, is this more efficient as far as the amount of time you've got to put in or?
I think it'd be more efficient. I think also that the capital module will be really helpful on the CIP stuff. That's kind of fell to the wayside the last couple of years. And before that was just a spreadsheet as well. This, you could track projects on there. And like you said, you could upload pictures and everyone could see how projects have progressed, progressing as long as we're keeping it updated.
As far as staff inputting, it sounds like this might be easier for the more efficient, as far as time goes for staff time spent on budgeting or? Is that hard to say or?
Yeah, I think it'd be more efficient. Right now, everyone comes with either written down piece of paper or, or in their own spreadsheet and tell us what their needs are. And then right now, they can just go and look at each of their line items and put in their amounts and like detail it out. Like for example, like with the PAC committee, they have $90,000 for each year and they, Steve will go in and he creates his own spreadsheet and details it out. And sometimes I might not get that or sometimes he updates it. And it's just not a back and forth thing, but on there, it could be detailed out. So I just like say, yeah, it's like Mural Fest.
But you've got to input all the stuff that he gives you, yeah. Where's he could possibly work with the same.
Give him access to this and he can put it right in there.
Just directly, yeah.
There's always a chance when, and working with spreadsheets, Excel spreadsheets, and then trying to put that into Casell software, there's always a chance in that transposition you make errors.
Yeah.
You know, that you drop a zero instead of getting $10,000 or something, $1,000 budget for that, for that $8,000 swing segment. So this does two things. It does make it more efficient, more effective for staff to spend less time on that and less time on the, on the finance department side as well as compiling this data and then trying to put that into a usable format, which Casell doesn't give you that opportunity. Secondly, which I think is actually more important, is the transparency end of this. I mean, you saw how easily you could go through these and get, you know, just instant responses and instance answers about where we are financially. You know, how's that general fund budget doing? What's your water fund doing? You know, how much is, are these events costing us? Where does your personnel cost overall?
Yeah.
It encapsulates that, makes it real quick and easy to use. And it serves as a dashboard too, that could be linked to your website so that anyone at a glance can go through and check this information.
Does it make the audit easier?
Not necessarily. The audit is still about how you, how you bring the money in, how you pay the bills, how you account for that, and whether or not it's in line with, with our ordinances. So no, I don't think it'll make the, the auditing different. They're still going to pull that information from Casell and from our, our, our records on our resolutions and ordinances.
I don't know. What kind of contract do we have to sign with this company? So like three years or five or?
I can answer that. So what I had sent over, our typical contract, so we're doing, Beth mentioned this year, it'd be about 5,900. We're prorating the amount to the end of the year so that y'all can use it for this budget cycle. And then we typically do a three-year contract, which will lock in that rate, that 16,500 rate for the next three years.
I like that. I don't know. I mean, the software looks really good. And I definitely understand that it'll improve everybody's life and transparency and all that. But 16,500 is a lot of money.
I talked to somebody else and they were about double. So what's that?
When you're looking at a $6 million budget, 1,500 a month, really isn't that a lot of money? I know it sounds like a lot. Will this system allow you to track like costs on vehicles and maintenance on equipment and sections of road? So you might get a lot more detail out of this that would save you money down the road because we could figure out our biggest issue areas or if there's a piece of equipment that should be replaced versus repaired. I use a, our office is using a higher tech software system for our bookkeeping. And it's really helped us out. So I'm for better systems.
Yeah, just to answer your question, Parnell, you, you will be able to track, especially with those capital improvements, what the costs are. And that's really hit the nail on the head where people find the, the value and the, the cost savings is by being able to track those, not miss things like that. And then, you know, saving money where you could find a replacement or you could find a repair instead of a replacement, for example, with the capital improvement plan.
Okay, that sounds like.
Ryan, could you stop sharing your screen, please? Thank you.
That sounds like Katie's, yes.
I guess it's a lot of money, but it sounds like it'd be a good thing for the town.
Parnell, yes.
It's a pain for someone's sake. You know, what's that? It's a lot of money. I think, I mean, person, 1,500 bucks a month, why?
We have other software that's double the price of this that we're currently using. Yeah, our website is like 10 grand a year. City Works is 30,000 a year. My software is just, it's kind of expensive, but.
Yeah, I guess I'm unaware of how expensive.
Casell is like 20, 24 grand a year.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion there?
Do we, we have a resolution or? I think we did, did we?
Yes, it is.
21-0703.
Can I ask more questions?
Sure.
So how much total do we spend on software? Do you know, or like a ballpark?
With this software, you would know it just.
Yeah. Just from what Beth listed, it sounds like about 100,000.
And it's really tough because they.
One that just does them all?
These Excel spreadsheets, they just, they're not at their fingertips, you know, so.
Yeah.
I do like the transparency aspect, and I think that the people in town will like that as well.
Kind of makes our lives easier by bringing to look at something.
Yeah, you guys can get access if you want during the budget process and start reviewing this stuff before we bring it to like workshops and things like that as well.
So I'd like to move that we approve resolution 2021-0703, Budget and Performance Management Software.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'm good.
Ask 70. Thank you, Brian. Sorry for the five minutes.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with the town.
Okay, next is Headwaters Trail Alliance Children's Bike Park.
Sure, I can actually kick that one off. And Mira from the Headwater or from HTA is here too. So this topic started with a conversation between Mira and I. I was down by the building and we were walking around talking about improvements that could be done down there. There's a section of the, the area that they use. It's if you're in the parking lot and go across the bridge, it's right on the other side on that, that right hand side.
Do you have the photos?
Uh, yeah, just.
I've got it right here.
And there was a map in the packet too. So that area right now isn't being used for anything. There's a fence that actually blocks it off. In talking with Mira, she said that area is heavily used by locals and, and people visiting. They'll have lunch in the, that little area and then go right like. So she thought this would be a good area for a little practice loop for kids and young adults, similar to the one at the St. Louis Creek area.
Yay, that's in town.
And Mira, do you have, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Thanks so much for kicking that off. Yeah. And I just want to say a huge shout out and thank you to the Town of Fraser for continuing to allow us to enjoy that great building and that great space. And we do see on average about 50 to 100 visitors in the summertime. And they are using all of the picnic tables and all of the outdoor space. And we bought some Adirondack chairs just for our staff at the end of the day or for meetings outside. And it, it's funny, now all of those chairs are being used by visitors too. So the use, I don't think is going to be decreasing anytime in the near future. And what a weekly visitor that we get is grandkids, the daycare that's right down the Fraser River Trail. And those little toddlers and preschoolers come over and they look at the statues and they have their picnics. And they do have a little Strider bike program that they implement there. And so, and we also have a lot of families ride by on bikes all, like all around that area and on the Fraser River Trail. And so actually, Myra came up with the notion that we could utilize that space for an in-town beginner, you know, beginner mountain biker skills area. It's not very big, so this wouldn't be a huge expensive project. And we're willing to incur kind of the labor costs associated with the construction of it. But in theory, what we are thinking of is, you know, having a picnic area, you know, a picnic table with the sun shade for parents or families to sit at. And then, you know, making some kind of short loop little circuit through there that would have some log rideovers and some little skinnies that kids could, or you know, kids and, and well, adults as well. But it would gear, be geared mostly for, for kids could ride on to practice their steering. You know, it wouldn't be anything, you know, extreme or challenging or very difficult as we already have those big jumps and that big course over at the rec fields, the sports complex. So it would be fairly complimentary to the use that's occurring in that area. It would just be removing some of the, the grass vegetation. We would keep the trees in place for shade and whatnot.
It's a great spot for it. I walked down there today and took a few photos. And I'm glad you're going to hold on to those big cottonwood trees because they have great shade.
So my only comment is, and I, I can't believe I'm saying this, but we do somehow, we've got to do some planning down there though. I'm hoping that as we do our Riverwalk District, that we can somehow tie Clayton Court with, with the Safeway Road so that people don't have to come out of the Riverwalk District down there by the visitor center under the highway with a left-hand turn and another left-hand turn back into Safeway. And I know there's a current plat on the property behind the Holiday Inn. And we've talked about this before. So anyway, I just don't want to lose sight of that. And this, Mira and I talked about this a little bit. This is a dirt park that needs to be modified, moved around a bit as it becomes clearer how we, or if we, we do an access through there. I think all this can exist in the same spot and still preserve what we've got going on. Because what Mira said and what everybody said here is that area's been extremely heavily used. And it is, it's great. I ride my bike through there at least four or five times a week to go to Safeway. And it's, there's people down there all the time. It's wonderful. But we can't lose sight of somehow, we've got to make the Riverwalk District tie in across that side of town. So I just don't want to lose sight of that. So.
And one other comment, where you have the map drawn on your plan, it's actually on that property that's behind, quite a bit of it would be on that property that's owned by Kent Holmes.
Well, that, Parnell, that was just a rough estimate to give people an idea of where it was.
Yeah, no worries. I reached out to Kent Holmes, the guy that owns land. It's not something he'd be opposed to. He might work with you guys on something like that down there because it's, you know, pretty close to the creek. It's not quite wetlands, but it definitely has some indications that it would be hard to build down in that area. So.
Yeah, we did have, Mira did have Jeff Elliott walk through there just briefly and take a look. And they're right, at least on the surface, no major issues with wetlands at this point. So.
So the ask is basically just for permission to, to move forward with that project. And I think there was like a $400 piece of that, like for the last scene material, potentially.
Yeah, potentially. And I, I think actually the biggest ask would be just the use of the public works staff for, you know, a half a day just to move some dirt around so that we could build those berms.
Yeah, it's probably Mira.
Yeah, me, X probably, yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds great. I think that we should put, maybe it's renewable every year so that we don't block it up or we can't get our access back to change use if we need. I like the idea.
And these are, these are dirt features. It's easy to modify, move it around. It's not a big deal. So.
Yeah, I just don't want to give it a useless use for.
Yeah.
Forever.
Yeah.
If we need it, then we can take it back. Okay? We don't have a resolution. So it sounds like we want to move forward.
Let's do it.
Everybody's nodding their heads.
So you want to bring back the resolution?
Well, actually, yeah, we could do that. You could take a vote now.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion.
I'd move to give support to the Children's Bike Park at HTA.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thanks, Mira.
That's awesome. And then I guess the one discussion maybe amongst you all is whether or not you want to name it something specific. So I guess that's for a later conversation, but just to put that little bit out there. But thank you all. Hope you have a great evening.
Thanks, Mira.
Thanks, Mira.
Thank you, Mira.
Andy Miller.
Okay, so we are now at the stage where we're.
Okay, so we are now at, um, the stage where we're gonna go into another executive session. So we're gonna ask everybody to leave that is in the room here. And we're gonna ask everybody online to leave as well, just to give everybody a heads up on this. And we'll give you another five minute warning countdown when we're getting ready to come back out of executive session. So I have a third executive session.
I moved to, I moved to enter into an executive session. For a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. And under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four zero two one four B. And for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop, developing strategy. For negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four E. Regarding, regarding conservation easement to include town attorney Ron McGowan, special counsel Melinda Beck, attorney Kent Whitmer. Town manager Ed Cannon, town clerk Antonette McVeigh, marketing and communications director Sarah Wick, town planner Catherine Trotter.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we are back from our executive discussion. We are now at discussion and possible action. And first is resolution twenty twenty one zero seven zero two default of amended. And reinstated annexation agreement. And this is not a public hearing, so we will not be taking any public comment on this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty one oh seven oh two default of amended. And restated annexation agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, um, I'd like to say a few things. So first off. This document has some pretty heavy things in it. Withholding certificates of occupancy are going, that's going to affect people who. May move to this community full-time, maybe their second homes, I don't know. But it could be a detriment if we, if we pass this. Now that being said, we are trying to get a conservation easement completed that's been out there for fourteen years. And, you know, I wasn't on the board back then, but I'm on the board now and I want that conservation easement just to be finished. And withholding certificates of occupancy doesn't mean that Clark has to stop building. It just puts a little emphasis on the speed in which we can get this done. And I just want it to be put to bed. I want it to be done so that the town can move forward.
Anybody else? Yeah, I thought, I don't know here, I think this is a bad idea and you guys are moving in the wrong direction with one of the major developers in our area. Okay, anybody else?
It's fourteen years overdue. The thirty day default notice was not cured. I think it's time to move on. And so we can get back to our other issues.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call. No, this is not a public hearing. You just say your last name.
Okay, Fisher, I.
Miller, I.
Souls, I.
Parnell? Quinn, A. Vanderneil, I. Motion carries. We are now at open forum, so we will, everybody that would like to talk, you can raise your hand digitally at this stage. Everybody can have three minutes.
Business not on the agenda.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So nothing, we cannot talk about what we just passed cuz it's business not on the agenda. So, yep, you can raise your hand digitally if you'd like to address the board. Three minutes. Do, we won't be coming back and forth, so get your statement made and then, and we'll move forward. Go ahead.
Hi, Clark Lipscomb, representing Grand Park. I'm gonna read fast here. This is an email I sent on June sixteenth. Twenty twenty one to all seven of the commissioners or receiver, board, sorry, town trustees. I received no response from any of you nor any communications about any of these issues from the town over the approximately last year. I'm reading, um, this isn't in regard to what you just passed. I am reaching out to seven of you to offer a meeting with me to discuss your desire to change Grand Park's agreements with Frazier in executive session. I'm always happy to meet with all of you to discuss any matters you would like to discuss about Grand Park and the town of Frazier. There are no developer defaults under the terms of any agreements and all annexation agreement obligations thus far have been fulfilled. Paying a lawyer to contact our lawyer to change agreements is no way to conduct business or to be responsible with town finances and its obligations. Most of you know I'm very available and accessible to discuss most matters. Importantly, two conservation easements exist over our land at Grand Park. One of those was negotiated, approved and adopted by the town covering the easement area required by the two thousand five PDD amendment, adopted by the two thousand five Town of Frazier Board. The town purports to repeal conservation easement and negotiate and accept it as holder. It seems the town does not want to be the holder of the conservation easement negotiated and adopted. And at the Grand Park Owners Association quarterly board meeting, the Owners Association Board approved taking assignment of Frazier's conservation easement holder position. Given the importance of that easement to Grand Park residents. The conservation easement negotiated approval recorded by the town remains in place, but seemingly needs a new holder. We would also like to discuss why the current trustees feel it is necessary to try and change prior town trustee actions. The two thousand five PDDP over a year of public hearings. And unnecessarily waste town resources starting fights that are not beneficial to town. Why the trustees have so little faith in the town zoning and permitting process that it thinks conservation easements are necessary over open space areas? All development permitting goes through an extensive town process. Thus far, all of those processes have protected the required open space areas. We have designed that are actually larger in size than required by the Grand Park PDDP. Should the town be placing conservation easements over the open space and parks it owns? Should it? I am optimistic. You seven trustees are comfortable. You can meet with me regarding any matters anytime, seven on one. As many of you are business owners, I expect you to not allow lawyers to negotiate and operate your business dealings, but rather document legal matters only when necessary. I know you're all very capable of having meaningful discussions about what you're trying to achieve without expending town funds unnecessarily on lawyers. That have no connections to our community. Please let me know if you'd like to accept my offer and schedule a meeting. Not one response and no communication over this past year from this town other than default letters that have been responded to by us. And gone unanswered. That is no way to conduct businesses as a town. It's disheartening. And I think if you wanna go down the road of conservation easements, the park that we gave, the Frazier River Park that we deeded to the town of Frazier. Put a conservation easement over it too, Katie. Put a conservation easement over the park next to Safeway. Let's put conservation easement over all the town owned land. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other not on the agenda that was not on the agenda, business not on the agenda? Can you explain how they raise their hands? Did somebody unmute? And then I, just to make it clear, you need to identify yourself if you're gonna talk, even if you're on digitally. Um, and whether or not you live in the town of Frazier.
Understood. My name is Scott Albertson. My address is sixteen sixty seven Cole Boulevard. Suite one hundred Lakewood, Colorado eight zero four zero one. I'm a lawyer at the law firm of Holly Albertson and Polk. I've been a land use lawyer. Land use entitlement and litigation lawyer for the forty-four years I've been practicing law. Uh, and I've represented Cornerstone and Grand Park, uh, since two thousand and fifteen. Obviously, I had several comments that were directed toward the, uh, resolution that you, uh, just adopted. That were designed to object to the adoption of that resolution and suggest some alternatives. But apparently I can't talk about that. What I do want to mention though, uh, is that. In two thousand five, Grand Park and Cornerstone, uh, when the. Uh, amended PDDP, uh, and amendment to the annexation agreement were negotiated. Uh, and executed during that one-year process. Uh, Cornerstone and Grand Park were represented by the law firm of Otten Johnson Robinson Neff and Raganetti. Specifically by Tom Raganetti and Muncie Ayers. And, uh, it is our understanding now that, uh, Frazier has retained that law firm. Uh, and Melinda Beck to advise it on matters relating to, uh, the conservation easement. Which was, uh, located on, uh, the land use plan in the PDDP in two thousand five. Uh, at a point in time when Cornerstone and Grand Park were represented by the same law firm. Uh, as such, we believe there's a conflict, uh, in, uh, the, with respect to the law firm. That Frazier has retained with respect to this matter and felt that that is something that should be pointed out to the board of trustees. Uh, with that, that's all I have to say. My other comments were directed toward the resolution. And we can, uh, I guess, deal with that in a different forum.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody else? Anybody on the audience here? Okay, I don't see any other. Updates. Couple of them that sounded really good note tonight. KFFR sent us a thank you letter for, um, supporting them, so I'll pass this around. It's really nice. Um, and then obviously behind us is Grand Kids Learning Center sent over. Thank you. For, um, helping save their daycare, our, our community's daycare. So, um, thanks for your support of that as well. Yeah, okay. Any other updates from anybody?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?